Pretty close.
I got thirty more.
Let's go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Now, I'll look through this meeting door and I'll look for motion to approve the agenda as printed, unless there's any amendments.
Did we get Sandy hook? We got a voice yet?
She probably rebooted her computer from those things.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve.
Well, we got enough here, so it's mosey on. The first, second, and Mary, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approve the minutes from March fifteenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as printed, they look good.
Then I guess I'll do the second.
The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alrighty. General public concerns. We have no one here from the general public. Nobody on Zoom.
Is anybody on Zoom?
Nope, nobody's on Zoom. We will move on to Ben.
Good morning, Ben. I've got a couple things on the agenda for today. The first item is to approve the application to work in the county's right of way. This is for Black Hills Energy. They run a propane line up to Pat Hill's place. It's on private property for ninety percent of it. They just have to cross our county road on two hundred and eightieth street gravel road. They got listed in here that they'll stay the minimum of forty-eight inches deep, which is the requirement for a gas line. We approved this permit, I believe, a year ago, but they've got a different contractor doing the work now.
Oh, so they redo it then?
Yes.
They did obviously get it.
They did, but they got it done last year.
For the first time?
Yep.
When they're reapplying for the?
They're reapplying with their new subcontractor.
So, Snippy, is that like a gas line main that goes by and they're pulling it from there?
It's a one-inch gas line. There's a small station just in Webster County on, what is that, Roosevelt Avenue? It'd be racing for them just south of two hundred and eightieth street. They're running a one-inch line from that station north, crossing two eightyeth street and then running through her property up to her acreage.
Really?
She's hooked in that way rather than having their own propane.
I know there is a gas main that runs across the southern part of the county here. And I think the people was kind of agreement when they ran through the property, they were hooked to natural gas. And that's probably why she has that option.
Yes.
Imagine it's a lot easier when the drivers.
And a lot cheaper.
Yeah.
And some of them have the old agreement that they just get it for free.
Oh, really? Then it's really cheap.
Not their gas!
Yeah.
Propane.
Propane. Or not natural gas.
That's a really good agreement.
Because they run through their property.
Rather than paying them an easement, buying it.
That's even better.
It's probably back then, natural gas was so cheap that they thought it was cheaper to route going. Probably was.
I'll make a motion to approve the application to the right of way for Black Hills Energy in these towns at section thirty-six.
I will second that, looks fine.
I guess we'll reapprove.
Okay. We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The other two items that I've got on the agenda are approving quotes for equipment. The first item is a loader for the Hardy shop. We got quotes from Murphy Tractor and Ziegler of Cortage. Murphy Tractor is the low quote, two hundred and four thousand dollars. I would like to look at the extended warranty for my forty-five hundred, which will carry the extended warranty off six years.
But is that on total? Could you get, what is the original warranty?
Uh, the original warranty is one year.
One year, part of the service. That's six years half that?
So this would carry for a total of six years.
Total five years.
So you're paying, yeah, you're paying.
A five-year extra contract.
Yes, nine hun- you're paying about nine hundred dollars a year for a full coverage warranty.
Did you physically look at, drive out, ride around, whatever, both the John Deere and CAP?
We did not physically drive them. We have the nine twenty-four in an older series. It's the nine twenty-four K in the Humboldt shop.
That's the wheel loader?
That's the wheel loader. So it's the same, it's the same model number, it's just a newer version.
It's got a gear.
Right. And it's the same thing with the nine thirty-eight.
Okay. Has that been the good?
They've both been very good machines.
We got two wheel loaders?
We have two wheel loaders, here's three.
Are you taking the phone?
No.
This is the, pardon me, one for each shop?
This is, this is one for each shop. Basically, what we've been doing is we've been having to rotate equipment around, depending on, depending on what job we're doing and whether we're stockpiling or building.
We're not, we're a lot short someplace.
Right.
These use quite often for ditch cleanup?
The loader?
Yeah, the wheel loader.
Basically, when we're.
Oh, these are, I'm sorry, I was thinking wheel excavator, pardon me. You know, these are.
These are, these are the wheel loaders.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, I got my machinery mixed up. I've been reading too many Ziegler catalogs lately.
And the John Deere you can get immediately?
Uh, the John Deere, I believe.
The seven-ten?
Seven-ten, yeah. So it'd be just in a next two years.
Two years, yes, three months.
I think you told us budgeted in this fiscal year.
It's budgeted in this fiscal year, yes. We've cut any equipment that I had out for next year.
Right. Hard for me to choose my equipment. I'm serious, I've been looking at too many Ziegler catalogs. And I know we talked way back when, now that I know a piece of equipment, used about even looking into used, apparently that probably wasn't.
We, we looked at used basically with the incentives that the county gives. It's a wash.
And they don't really give the used, the good used stuff isn't that much cheaper anyway, is it?
You're still paying a premium for it.
You can't get the extended warranty.
Right. So this, uh, this is a wheel loader as well as an additional bucket with a grapple for when we're doing.
They're not trees?
Yep, awesome, yeah. So that, that one gravel bucket will be universal, it'll work with both.
That's what I was wondering.
Both John Deere's.
But it won't switch to the CAP?
It won't switch to the CAP.
Okay.
But when.
I know what you're saying.
For the, for the track to be able to be, for the CAP, excuse me. The boat shop has the CAP. When they're doing tree work, we would just swap loaders with one of the other shops.
So I could use a fork, a gravel hooks. Gotcha. Okay.
Well, if I'm like, everybody's pretty happy with that, then.
Yeah, they're both very good machines.
So I asked all the questions and figured out which thing we're buying. I would make a motion to approve said John Deere wheel loader.
I have a first.
Is Emma making a second?
I think I'm doing something.
I'll do the second.
Second from Bruce, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Is that with, um, with the warranty then?
Yes.
I would like to purchase the extended warranty.
Is that correct, Eric?
Yeah, and that was the full, that was the full amount, that was the full quote, yes.
Alright. Now we're moving on to approve quotes for. Purchase of an excavator and trailer.
Yes. Uh, so I've got, I've got four quotes on this one. We did Murphy and Ziegler again, as well as two separate machines from Mid Country machine. All of them are relatively similar in the machine that we're, that we're looking at.
Didn't get the.
But the price ranges.
Yeah, it's on the backside.
Don't worry, you can put it in the page.
The trailers that we're looking at, for the most part, are the Felling FT fifties. That's a tilt deck trailer with a stationary six-foot at the front to set a shaker head or an additional bucket at the front. After reviewing all of the quotes and specs for the equipment, my recommendation is the last item on the, on the bid sheet, the Belco EV one sixty VR seven. Horsepower wise, all of these are roughly a hundred and five horsepower, which is a notch up from the link belt that we currently have. This EV one sixty has a dozer blade on the front, it's a six-way dozer blade. It's coming with an additional five-foot ditching bucket. I need to talk to them about an extended warranty and see if there's something covered on that. Availability, they thought the excavator would be available in May. And trailer, they're estimating at six months out with price of steel going through the roof. Nobody's pulling a lot of extra steel, they're basically building them as they get the orders.
I got a question.
Sure.
Why did Mid Country pull a smaller machine, just because they had it, I think?
The smaller machines still met the specifications.
Oh, I see, okay.
The only, the, the main difference between the, the SK one forty and the ED one sixty is the, the front blade.
Oh, the blade, that's the difference.
Blade on the front. So it would be similar to the machine that we've got, the link belt right now with the front blade. Only this new one would have the ability to pitch each direction. Like I said, it is considerably higher. I think our link belt has seventy-five horse and this is a hundred and five. Uh, this, this machine would fill the void that we have with only having two excavators right now. We've, we've got one excavator. The link belt is going to stay in Hardy. This new for Belco is going to go to Bod. And then we've got the rubber tire Hitachi in the Humboldt shop. When we have seasons like, like last season, we, we're starting ditch cleaning in August and we cleaned all the way till.
Yeah, December.
Till December.
Somebody was always short of that.
Somebody was, somebody was always short an excavator. So we were trying to do odd jobs with the equipment that we had and, and constantly rotating.
What's that, give us extra for the reach compared to what we have now?
Uh, I am looking at the nine-foot, ten-inch arm. This should give us reach to get all the way to the back of the right of way on a thirty-three, on our standard gravel roads. On, on our pavements where we have wider right of way, it wouldn't reach. But we could get down in the bottom of the ditch with this machine and dig.
So how, uh, what does it take to pull this trailer, dump truck?
Uh, this would be a tag trailer, yeah. We would pull it with a dump truck.
Okay.
Yes.
The price, it's including the trailer?
This price includes the trailer, yeah. The, the trailer itself is about thirty-seven thousand of this.
And same company is going to provide the trailer?
We will purchase both the trailer and the machine from Mid Country. They have a supplier for, for the trailers.
Do you check around for any other trailer? They, they're just a distributor.
They're distributors.
Yeah, brand trailer it is?
It's the Felling FT fifty.
The one they're made?
Where the fellings are made? I've got the literature on it. I mean, it's, it's the same, same trailer that Murphy was specing.
I see that, and there's a tow master from Ziegler.
And then, and then Ziegler was running the felling and I think their tow master was just a little bit cheaper, so they, they spec the tow master for them. But this is a fifty-pound trailer, so in the event that we upgrade our link belt in five years, I'm sorry, fifty thousand pounds, not fifty.
That's a big trailer.
Yeah. In the event that we, that we upgrade our link belt, say, five years from now, we can go to a larger machine.
Machine loaded.
Existing trailer. We can go up to fifty thousand pounds. The machine right now that I'm looking at is thirty-seven thousand pounds.
To get a bit, yeah, a bit larger.
So we can get a bit larger.
This is a tilt bed trailer, you said?
With a stationary front deck. Talking to, talking to Tom and Kevin, they wanted to try this tilt bed trailer versus the ramps for ease of, of loading and unloading, basically.
So is that on hydraulic?
Yes.
Solider?
Yes. Like I said, the, the front six-foot of that is stationary. So if they've got additional attachments.
They can set it on there.
They strap them down over the front.
Checking with the guys that were always short, you know, but everybody's on their workings this past, past year, like, as we, as we, conditions were good. Is this going to meet what they're looking for, what they're thinking about for size and ability?
Yes. I mean, aside from going up to, to a two-fifty or a three-fifty, where now all of a sudden you're looking at getting a.
The big, a lot bigger.
Right. You'd be going quite a bit larger. Now you're looking at a semi truck and, and a low boy to haul it around.
Right.
Then you start thinking how many days you're going to use that versus.
Right.
This one is more, in my opinion.
This is an everyday-use machine versus a, a large one would be rented two or three times, depending on the large projects that we've got going.
Well, I'm only caught to getting back to the trailer. Is there any other, because they don't even know when they're going to get the trailer.
Everybody's out that far.
Yeah.
And right now, the trailer that we do have, with all those machines, it's a twenty-pound trailer. So it'll haul forty thousand pounds, it'll just carry this thirty-seven thousand pound machine an extra bucket.
So then, so then we'll have two trailers.
We'll have two trailers for two machines, yes.
Okay. Alright, and you say you're going to check on the extended warranty option or not?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the one that is listed here, which I realize is for Murphy Tractor, five years and two thousand hours, looks like they get this, their warranty costs seventeen hundred. So, well, guess it would be something in that.
Similar.
Right. And if it's, if it's too much money, obviously, we wouldn't purchase.
Tell you what, why don't we look at purchasing this, where you have it set up, and then bring that extended warranty to us next week if you want?
Okay.
Or maybe just to, you know.
I'll, I'll just reach out to you guys and let you know how much it is.
Yeah, and then we'll give you the okay amount.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the Mid Country for the ED one sixty VR dash seven. That was the one you were.
Yes. We've got, got one more question. If, because there's other trailer manufacturers and I just, because I just happen to know of one, and they do make these type of trailers, is it worth checking? You know, you know what this one costs and you know it's going to take a while to get it. Is it worth checking?
Who's the other supplier?
Ah, the name is evading me right now. They're down by Boone. They make a lot of utility tech trailers, they make a lot of, they can make any trailer. But this is kind of about like, it, I mean, you don't, know if you don't ask and you know what this costs and you know it's going to be probably bare minimum six months to get it, so it's going to get through a good part of the season anyway.
They, they'd say six months because right now, like I said, they're, they're building them as they receive the orders. But yeah, if, if you want me, I mean, it just, I can tell Mid Country and I can contact.
Lane trailer.
What's that?
Lane trailer.
Lane?
Lane.
And they make a triple tilt deck.
They can, they make a lot of stuff for power companies. Just, you know, they make virtually everything. Custom made, they make, they're making a lot of custom spool trailers, like for utility companies. And they, they will make, they can make anything. I mean, I'm just saying.
I just, I can make a phone call.
I mean, it, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't cost anything to call them because you know what your, what this specs out at and you know what it costs. And if they tell you the same thing, then I'd say, yeah, this is fine. Because like I said, everybody may be in the same boat with the supply issues and material issues, so. Just a thought.
Yeah, I can make a phone call, but it doesn't take any time to do that, but.
So what do you want to do?
I'd like to, either the machine approve?
We don't have a price on the machine, though, it's a lump sum.
Oh, I've got separation.
Oh, do you?
At the office, yeah.
Oh, okay.
If you do, don't, don't mind, I mean.
Like I said, I, I can make a phone call, but.
And then you will get a check on the extended warranty?
We have other things we can do that Ben gets the separation for that.
Probably got time. Do you want us to do that and get back to us?
I, you know what, why don't I just table it for the week and I'll, I'll bring everything back next week?
Okay. Alright.
I'll return my.
Thing might go up ten percent in a week, prices, the way steel's going.
I hope not.
I know.
I return my motion then.
Because he's got to check on the extended warranty anyway, so.
Okay.
You got time, you can do it.
Alrighty, this has been tabled.
That's Ben.
Eight forty-five, we are looking at adoption of FMLA policy for Humboldt County employee handbook. What is this?
Right, now, we really don't have a clear definition on the procedure and how we go about the FMLA. And Renee, with her girlfriend, has developed that to include in our handbook. She was planning on including it with the redevelopment of the whole handbook, but feels that it should probably be put in there sooner than.
Later.
That might be, to get all of it together.
Okay.
It's just a way, one more thing, she feels that we're lacking in that area, I believe, that we need to fill in right now instead of waiting until later.
Well, she's been after us for quite some time to move forward with our handbook updates anyway.
Yeah, and she's working on them, so.
So she has this policy ready for adoption?
Yeah. And hopefully, she feels that it should cover everything and explain it to a, a lot better than the other did and covered. Much more eloquent than it was.
Okay.
The old one was only one paragraph that didn't address.
A lot of things.
It was very vague.
Sure, she'll get this out to all the department heads and they'll have somebody sign if, once we approve this?
Yeah, we will do that.
Does that every employee file? Not just department head?
Um, probably.
I mean, FMLA is, is a federal requirement. Doesn't matter if the employee's signing.
Same as they're not, it's available to.
It's something that we have to provide.
They know it's available.
Everybody knows it's there.
It's an acknowledgement.
Any questions, they can ask the questions. That's why you want to make sure that you get a, a signature, an acknowledgement that they got it, they appreciate it.
Okay.
You're supposed to do that, too.
Alrighty.
So we need a motion for this?
I'll make that motion to approve the FMLA policy for Humboldt County.
I have a first from Sandy.
I'll second.
I'll have a second from Bruce, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. So we're working on that handbook also. She's supposedly redoing that whole thing. Okay, we've got a few minutes to the public hearing time. Let's go down and do the claims.
I looked through the book for the general, there was a total of three forty, seven, nine, seven point ten. And drainage, I had forty-three, twenty-two, oh eight.
I did not write those down, but I will second Bruce's motion.
That is what I had. Okay, all in favor of claims?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Just an FYI, for most of the, part of that was a dump truck that had been ordered last year that was delivered and a pickup that was ordered last year.
From the sheriff's department?
In a sheriff's vehicle that was, so.
That was right at eleven months for us. We ordered our dump truck's last vehicle, so.
Everything's a little tougher to get these days than it used to be. Okay, why don't we, do committee reports?
There's, there's one side-by-side, and, and.
We, we're just thinking of an obstacle board for you. I'll get you that contact information.
On Monday, after the meeting, Chris and I went out and did a train at the office on his job review. On Tuesday, the sixteenth, I had a demo financial meeting, Zoom. And then Friday, the nineteenth, was up here at one o'clock for the union meeting with the deputies. So that's what I have for the week.
Okay, on Tuesday, the sixteenth, via Zoom, I had a meeting again. The same base that we're talking about is how to team employees that will work for the ways that we can afford to pay them and we're trying to come up with some ideas as far as how to get different companies in town to help with, with that. So it's still a work in progress. And then Friday, I participated by phone, so, um, meeting with, uh, you know, that, that's all I had.
Alright, uh, Friday morning, Friday, the nineteenth morning, I had a second judicial district meeting via Zoom that morning. And then I was here at courthouse for the union negotiation discussions that afternoon. That's what I had last night.
On Tuesday, I had a Humboldt County housing meeting at City Hall at two in the afternoon. And then I was here on Friday at one for the union negotiations and after that, I crawled up on the roof and checked the roof out.
Monday, you had this?
And Monday, out at secondary, it was, this was Ben about his evaluation. That's all I had. Alright, we're getting really close to that. Do you have anything else for us, Chris, this week that we need to talk about?
Hmm, no. Nope.
Okay.
I have nine o'clock.
Okay. Our clock a little slow up there, is it? Yep, I got nine on mine, too. Okay. I'll look for a motion to open the public hearing on our county budget.
Some more?
I have a first, I have a first and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the public hearing is open, discussion on county budget. I will turn that over to you.
Okay. Anyway, this goes, um, it's over the allotted amount and we have to publicly post this and do the adoption of it. I've presented it to you guys before. I've presented it to you guys before, and we went through it, so.
It's an opportunity for the public to come up and ask questions, why is it this amount?
Yep.
Basically.
And the reason for that is, the beginning balance is lower. Increased COVID procedures and protection. Wages, of course, make that go up, but, what was our other reasons?
Um.
Debt services.
Debt service levy. Some of it was still spillover from the new repairs to like the LEC, or so, had to redo the parking lot there, redo the tower, those all added up.
And some to give us petition?
Well, yeah, because our carryover was dropping every year.
There was no, nothing in writing? Didn't get any-
No.
Receive any questions?
No questions, no complaints.
Okay. There's no public for input. I'll make a motion, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second that.
We have a first and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, now, I suppose, geez, we've got to wait 10 minutes for that. Okay.
Well, you have to wait in order to, in case somebody's rushing in here.
Unless we drop down, we could maybe do that drainage stuff, disappoint the commissioners. Yeah.
So, what drainage?
Yeah.
Do that quick, that shouldn't take long. I'll make a motion to go on drainage.
Okay, a first and a second to go on the drainage. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we're in drainage.
Yeah, I got something for you.
I'm coming right back.
Okay.
Are we using the same? Or the commissioners?
I think we have some new ones.
New, that's what I wondered.
Yeah. I think she has two or three new, new people who have accepted to do, to do the petition. Probably caught her off guard a little bit, she was probably planning for nine forty.
Well, I guess we can either raise it-
So it won't take long. Kind of caught you off guard a little bit, were we?
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, well, we're looking to appoint drainage commissioners for DD seven sub two.
Yes. And the list that I had prepared, we had discussed this a couple weeks ago.
Yep.
I have a list for Corey Erickson, Brent Keenest, JD Myers, Derek Bory, Chris Worgland, and Pat Hill.
Okay. Now.
Is this a list that you all need?
It'd be nice to have that in our files.
Okay.
Would you like to make copies so we can pass around?
I should.
We, with Pat and Brent, right?
Yes.
Have been the ones that we've used, basically, nonstop, and with some new names. I'd just like to have some of the new people work with some of the people that have been doing it, so that they kind of get to, so I don't know how you want to do one and two, or two and two, or how, what would you want?
Well, that, in my opinion, I'd like to see Brent work with somebody new to get their feet wet.
This is, this is-
This is DD seven sub two.
I see that, which is-
The project out here by Dave Huntermark that he was up here with.
Right, that's what I thought.
It's a small one.
Small, Pat Hill will not work on that project. So, it's Brent, and the other guys, and that's about the size of it.
Yeah.
We're just, we have the list and we're assigning it to that project. I believe there's reclassification involved in that.
Yep. I think any of those individuals would be fine, in my opinion.
I think they're-
They're all pretty knowledgeable. But it is, it is a different, different type of process.
I agree with Bruce, though, to have, you know, because Pat and Brent have done a lot of these over the years. Why we wanted a larger, longer, larger list is, they were only two.
Right. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Captain. Dave's not here.
Right, but I'm gonna-
He's lost more stuff than his goal.
Yeah, I'll put one in the straw for him. What my suggestion would be to, to ask Brent, and then have a first and an alternate in case the other guy isn't available. You know, because this time of year, people sometimes take off and leave. If someone would like to make that motion.
Well, with JD and Chris Worgland both farming, I don't, I don't know how long-
Both black guys, too.
Right.
So I thought of that, Bruce.
And Derek Bory, he's farming, too. So, they're all-
They're all farming.
Yep.
Well, I guess I would, I would like to think Chris and JD are both not, from that area, they would be further removed.
Further removed from it, and that way- That's one of the problems, because you can't be committing during that area.
Right. And then pick an alternate, too, in case-
I was going with Chris as the number one, and we'll ask JD if-
If he doesn't.
-if he would do the, as a backup.
I'd second that motion.
Okay. We have a first and a second for Brent Keenest, and then Chris Worgland and JD as an alternate.
Are you good with that, Sandy?
I'll sit with that.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Perfect.
Good enough.
Just let us know if that works for them.
Sure.
Do you have any idea when this timeframe for them to have to work on this?
Um, I've already received an email from Boltman Mank, and he asked that I get these appointed as soon as possible. I replied back that we would be appointing them at today's meeting.
Okay. Who was that gentleman, was it Nathan? Did I want the young man to come up here and work with us on that?
I believe so.
I think it was, yeah, okay. Alrighty, now, still at nine ten.
I got nine oh nine.
Do ya? Think it's been close.
I don't know if this is, if this is something that you want to see in driving home from Thor.
Oh, yeah.
The road, it's adjacent to the Thor Blacktop, that one section of the open ditch is showing some sloping, and you can see where there's a section here and a section here. And I actually gave copies to Ben, because this is an actual outlet down here. Yeah, this is the Thor Blacktop.
Down by Gary Keenest?
Yeah, east of Gary Keenest place, there on the north.
Narrow bridge?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the north side, east of the bridge-
Yeah.
Where the dredge runs right along the road. There's a lot, quite a bit of sloping on the, on the north side, and it looks like there might be a blowout on the south side.
Yeah, this, yeah, it's wide.
And in, and in on the road?
Yeah, I haven't been out to look at it yet, but-
And actually, I-
I'm familiar with where it's at.
Yeah, this was just driving by it. You can see how much of this is buried.
Did you fix that already?
We cleared one last fall.
Another section that's quite as large down here, but then you've got, this actually looks like a newer outlet, or that it's, I mean, it's, that's in really good condition, and there's no land around it that's blurred. But this area here between the two posts, and this has got an actual, like, concrete basin down, down below that. I just, I just thought, oh, that might be worth pulling over and taking a picture to see if that is something that we need to address for the next meeting.
We have a petition to clean the ditch close to that, it's only about quarter mile away. The guy can just track right up alongside the ditch and maybe fix it down. We don't have anybody assigning to it yet.
And this is where it bends and goes north.
Yeah, exactly where that's at.
So you have, you have somebody that will be doing that area?
No, it's actually background, it's going, there's a Y.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because this is, like, right here is where the bridge, that little narrow bridge crosses the Blacktop.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so are we going out of drainage, Ben?
I'll look for a motion to get up.
Make a motion to go out of drainage.
Alright, I have a motion to go out of drainage.
Second.
Got a second from, so I'll get it to Sandy. She's on the two second delay.
I know, she can have that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we're back in general session.
We did cross one hundred and twenty feet last, was it Thursday or Friday? I drove up there and met with that Mark Kellmer. Thursday, it was Thursday, and then we, we bladed the road, but we left signs out over the weekend because it was still, still soft.
Yeah.
There was still frost in the road when they started-
Oh, there was.
Yeah.
How deep did they go, go when they went through the road?
It's about six feet.
Oh, okay, from the top of the road.
Yeah, I want to say there were seven feet just out in the field on the north side, and it's still coming up, but it was about six feet through the road.
Good depth, then.
Over there where they buried underneath the Blacktop, that looked like, looked pretty good over there.
Right, yeah, there's a little extra dirt there where they had bladed up so that they can get their equipment across the road, but otherwise, they always need to get some grass thrown out on it, and pay the invoice when it shows up.
Yeah, okay. Welcome back. Okay, now we have nine ten. We're moving on to the public hearing for fiscal year 2021 Humboldt County budget.
Making noise to go open the public hearing.
We have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Discussion on county budget. This is basically the same discussion, same thing we talked about at nine o'clock.
Anything additional?
Uh, not that I know of.
Still public input?
No.
Still not, nobody called while you were in here, or?
No, nothing's there.
Is there somebody up there?
No, you want me to reload that?
Oh, no.
Maybe.
Oh, our time limit has gone out.
Neither have I.
I suppose technically we should.
Yeah.
You know, it's really hard to do backwards.
Well, you can turn it around.
Yeah, you can turn it around.
Baby's on the phone, too.
Yeah, there's one.
Good baby. I hate these things. Okay, where do we go? So if it goes idle, do you have to start it over?
No technology, right?
Not so much.
It's great when somebody else runs it, that knows what they're doing.
What?
Like my kids.
Is it working now?
Don't know yet.
It's trying to connect right now, the way it looks.
Making sure nobody's on there-
There we are.
-in public hearing.
I can try it.
Okay, we'll give it a couple minutes to see if somebody wants to zoom in, or a minute or two.
Can I get the glasses?
Yes, you may.
I'm taking the transition here.
While we're waiting for that, I'm going to somebody to answer. He just fell asleep in my office.
Don't look like everybody's beating their door down.
No. Okay, sorry. Okay, can she connect now, or is she?
I think she's just gonna stay on the phone.
Okay.
Take it just a minute, edit herself for her to get back, and then we'll continue. So Randy's been patiently waiting here.
He's patient.
He's still on it. We're ahead of his time here. He's just, I mean-
Anyway, there's nothing new with the budget that wasn't presented before.
Okay.
Just hoping to get a little better balance starting out for the next year and keep going from there.
Are you back, Sandy? Uh, yeah?
Aye, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Alrighty, we're all here now again.
I'm making a motion to close the public hearing. I have nine seventeen.
Nine seventeen, we have a first and a second to close public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Adoption, adopt resolution 2020-06, a resolution approving the Humboldt County budget for fiscal year 2122.
I would make said motion for the twenty, is it, just double checking, because it is 2021, but is that the correct number, 2020-06?
Yes.
Okay. Twenty twenty-
Well, it should be 2021, sorry.
That's what I was wondering.
So I'm just, with that correction, because we are in 2021. So it's 2021-06, approving the Humboldt County budget for fiscal year 2122. Make that motion.
Okay, I have a first, can I entertain a second?
I'll second it.
We have a first and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, moving on, we have adopt resolution, this is going to be probably 2021 also. Twenty twenty-one-07, a resolution adopting the compensation board recommendations for fiscal year 2122. And we do have a copy of that in front of us. We accepted their presentation back probably in February, or late January, I don't know when we got it. I don't remember for sure. But we did adopt it. So we took that into consideration when we did our budget. And now it is time to get this adopted, so it's permanent.
Looks like it's the same thing that we had before, so I'll make that motion to accept our resolution 2021-07.
I will second Sandy's motion.
Alright, we have a first and a second, on the compensation board's recommendations, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The A's are three that passes. Alrighty, we are done with all that business. I think we can move on to you, Randy. Okay?
Thank you.
You want to be?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thanks for seeing me again. Last time I was here, I thought I wouldn't have to come for you again for a while. I thought I had everything ducked, every duck in a row, but apparently not. It's like I'm back coaching, where you think you got a handful of water and you're not going to have to worry about it, and then you make adjustments, you start losing water, so. What I've given you here is, first of all, you may recall that last time I was here, we were looking at presenting a penalty letter, and, which was sent, I communicated with them, and then after the information that we received on House File 2512, in talking with the county attorney, he then resented-
File 2512, in talking with the county attorney, he then rescinded that letter and the penalty was not enforced. And after looking at this, uh, this law extensively, uh, several times, I just keep coming up with more and more questions. And I know I spoke with Bruce, I think he was on a Saturday morning or whatever, and he'd had some other information as well, so what I came up with here, uh, the law is here, this is what I got off of the internet, so if you want to reread, I've done it several times, and each time I read it, I get just a little bit more confused, so either, I'm, I guess I'm not quite sure how to continue, but the other sheet I have here is basically the questions that I come up with, and if you look at the first paragraph, I guess I'm requesting that the Board of Supervisors, uh, look into who we can get to actually answer questions, make clarifications on what this law is and how it will affect Humboldt County, and it's what you all know. I've talked about having a Board of Adjustments and Planning and Zoning Commission coming together on, uh, a joint effort to look at the comprehensive plan and our ordinances and how we would revise or rewrite or whatever, and so this has thrown another whole, uh, thing into that, into that process. And so my, my goal is to have a meeting again in April with those boards, and, but I know there's gonna be questions as I bring up this information because it affects all of those things, not just now, but also into the future. And so, uh, I guess what I'm requesting here of the board is that we find someone that would be able to provide us with answers to some of the questions I have here, or maybe any other questions that you may have, or that you, uh, maybe somebody else in the community or whatever, uh, has. As you can see there, my list is quite, uh, quite lengthy. I have, uh, I have no understanding of how this law came about, how it, uh, what was the purpose for it, and I, I still really don't understand all of that, and so I'd just like some clarification from somebody that knows, I don't know who that would be, but as you...
That should be the how many dollar question. Yeah, that's a pretty good question.
Well, my assumption would be that it was somebody, would be somebody that was involved in the passage of this.
Maybe it was pushed by Farm, or it was backed by Farm Bureau.
Farm Bureau, right.
Force is a good term.
My concern with looking at somebody that's getting the information from somebody that was supporting you is, is not really giving us the full intent of the law. I, I'm not saying it's biased, but I'm not saying, I just want clarification of, you know, what it is, and as you put, as you see there, I have three categories: interpretation of the law, utilization of the law, and then how we administer it. There's things in the law to talk about, making changes in how we do memberships in our Board of Adjustments and, uh, Board, uh, Planning and Commit, Board, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, and so those things are also in there, so we're required to make those changes. It doesn't really say how, from what I can see, it just says you're gonna do it.
I have a question.
I just would like some clarification.
When, when would this pass?
June.
Yeah, last year.
Last year?
Yeah.
Last year.
And I have no, I have no information about that.
No, obviously you didn't, none of us did till recently. I have a suggestion. We reach out to our, uh, area, House Area Representative, who would be Mike Sexton, who was there at the time and is still there because he was re-elected, and I, I would start with him, because I think that we're on the track of someone that was in the legislature that was working on this, who would it be? You know, get the, get where it came from, like you said, Randy, what was the intent, purpose, what's the, what explanation? He, I'm not saying Mike himself would know, but he would probably know the direction, the steer you, to find the person to give you the correct description of all this, unbiased.
I just don't, I don't wanna take it one step forward and two back, again, I've been doing that.
Right, well, this was, this was, uh, I never knew about this.
No.
Well, so much of the stuff that goes on down the State House, I was gonna use a different word.
Stuff is good.
But it gets pushed through by, you know, they're, they're trying to fix a problem for a certain group or individual, and they don't realize the ramifications it has elsewhere.
Certainly not.
You know?
It's, it's a carte blanche, build whatever you want, don't ask any questions, is what the House File is.
And I'm sure it had, probably had something to do with probably the chicken industry or the hog industry, and it affects every piece of property in Humboldt County that has something built on it, from a garden shed to a machine shed to a grain bannery.
Well, I just think you get as close to the source as you can, and that you can't get much closer than somebody that serves in the House of Representatives, where it came from, uh, that would be my suggestion, if you would, you know, and rather than get too many middle people.
Right.
If you would reach out to them, because you have a specific question, which are valid questions for all of us, for, and not just us, I think every county, that, that'd be a start, and I would heat steer you in the right direction. We're looking for the straight answer on it.
I don't think anybody argues the point that, you know, Farm Bureau's method was they didn't want people, farmers, to have to apply for...
Building rights, yeah.
Which, whatever, but there was no charge to them anyway, and all it was, our intent is, is to know here, you're within the guidelines, you're not too close, you're not over something, you're, because once you start building and you are in the wrong location, it's a lot easier to do it before, if you went out and looked, than it is to figure out how to remove a foundation or a building or a whatever, after it's started. That's all, but this clearly states they don't have to ask anybody.
And they could, they all have to borrow the subject to anybody, uh, for, for what they've done. What, I'm not saying that they would do anything wrong, but if there's, it's like, okay, part of the population, for whatever reason, doesn't have to stop at stop signs.
Yeah, that's basically it.
I mean, really, and so, and I put it there in my last, second to last paragraph, my concern is that we have, are totally in compliance, we're transparent and honest with all the citizen property owners.
Well, we have been.
And, and we need to make sure that we do that, and I'm not talking about just property owners, it could be somebody that's renting an acreage, it could be somebody in a commercial or residential zoned area next to a, an agricultural zone property. I mean, it's not just property owners, it's basically everybody, and that, that could be affected, and obviously, we're gonna get questions, if I'm a, you know, I, I'm getting a residential zone permit, and they go, well, my, my neighbor, he did have that one, you know, you're gonna, I mean, you're gonna have questions like that, and, you know, also it comes down to, what if somebody does something that they just wanna do, willy-nilly, and the neighbor says, oh, I don't want that there, now there's no due process to do anything about it.
Protect their rights.
And that's what I tried to write in here, some of my concerns or thoughts, I don't have the answer to any of these questions that I place here, but I would like to get that, and so if...
That's my suggestion, I mean, that's just, to get to, close to the heart of where this came from.
Right.
That would be about that.
I did, I thought about doing that, but I thought, better not do that without approval.
I'd call him, but I don't know Mike Sexton experienced well, and I'd ask him all these are very legitimate questions and concern.
Yeah.
But rather than to get in the, you know...
I don't mind doing it, I just didn't wanna do it on my own without, you know, approval of the board here.
That's, I'm not, you know, we can't promise anything, but it's a free phone call, and it's valid questions to ask, and it gets to the root of where this came from.
And it's not just Humboldt County.
No, it's not just Humboldt County.
And I'm probably, well, I'll have to call other counties and see how they're doing it, but it's been my experience, when I do that, there's so many different answers.
Right.
Just on what the zoning ordinance is, well, we do this, we, it's willy-nilly, it's why I try to figure out, everybody's interpreting the, so I figure, I, I might have to go to the source.
So when we were told from John that we're reading too much into this, I, what's your reply?
When John says we're reading too much into this...
Isn't that what he replied back to the email? That we're reading too much into this?
I know what you're talking about, I've read that.
That's exactly what he said.
We're, we're reading way too much into this when we asked that, those questions.
Well, the way I, when you look at that, we have absolutely no, no authority to control any of the building that goes on in the county, they can just do whatever they feel like.
No, like, Alalato County, I, I sent you that, uh, they require a, they, they issue a certificate of exemption to the farmer for the building, where they can still spell out, these are your offset distances, this is how far you have to build away from your lot lines, um, but it's, it's similar to what we're already doing now, we, we issue the permit and we don't charge them anything.
Mm-huh.
You know, you're, you're, you're just tomato, tomato, it's the same thing.
It's just different wording.
It's just different wording.
Instead of permit, it's called...
Instead of permit.
If they, if they wanna look at your, they're still asking for something, though.
But if they, if they, if they just say, no, I ain't doing it.
They don't care.
They, you have no recourse.
Not at all.
Basically, that's what the law says. No, we don't. They're exempt from us even requiring anything. Yeah, that's the way I read this thing.
Well, that's the way Terry set it up at, at E D.
Yeah, mm-huh.
You guys are in violation to request that.
Yeah, to, to ask them to ask for a permit.
That was the word.
Mm-huh.
So, and that's how we ended up getting the copy, was from them.
Mm-huh.
So, I guess that's, I, I'm just, and I don't wanna, I don't think any of the board is up here looking for the hornet's nest or the bee's nest to, to go up and hit it with a stick and see if we can't rattle, I don't think anybody's trying to do that. All we're trying to do is clarification as to what we are supposed to do in case something happens with a building that is in the wrong, shouldn't be there, gets put there, now who's in fault? Is it Randy? Because Randy didn't go out and do the measurements and say, yep, well, maybe, or is it the state for saying we don't have to do it?
I apologize if I'm reading more into it, as I said, but, but you can see, I, I read into it.
You're doing this.
You know, and it, it, to me, it isn't just even that. I mean, yeah, we go out, okay, they're not in compliance with the ordinance, okay, they got it too close to the border. They don't have to have any, there's no application, so it, that's null and void.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So the regulations of the law, or our ordinance, would be null and void because of the law supersedes our ordinance, the way I'm looking at it. And if I'm reading something into that, I shouldn't, but, uh, that's why I came up with all these questions.
That's why I, I think I asked Ben, is there any state setbacks that we have to follow? There is none, is there?
No, I mean, it, it, it varies from county to county.
From county to county, it varies.
Well, we'd be on highways, so...
Highways.
Yeah.
Yeah, the state protects their property, but the county can't protect ours.
On state highways, but not on, every county.
Isn't this sounding normal?
Yeah, they, they cover themselves, but they won't let us protect ourselves.
Well, by passing that, nothing's stopping your neighbor from putting up a, a, a chicken house or a, a hog facility, as long as they stay underneath the number of heads right next to your, your acreage.
Yeah, well, it is, that's the way the law is, they could put up a 2,490 head right across the road from your house.
Right.
Well, I'm, I have an acreage and I have, uh, solar panels on my house, my na, and I'm within compliance, but the neighbor decides to build a eighty-foot building, whatever...
Or a grain leg.
And block out the sun from my solar panels.
Yep.
I have no recourse, except for it would be personal litigation, I'm assuming, you know, but what, you wouldn't have anything to say about it.
I think it opens up a huge can of worms, because, as we've stated time and time again, and like Bruce said, we're not trying to, you know, be over regulatory, we don't like that, but all the permit was, it was for the benefit of everyone, mostly the person asking for the permit to live for a building.
Right, yep.
So, and now you don't have any of that, and it's, you're gonna do stuff after the fact? Then that's...
Well, actually, you can't do anything after the fact.
That's, well...
Because you wouldn't have...
What if the guy going to the zoo, uh, you know, grain bin in the ditch, oh, it's closer to the road that way, you can load right off the road.
Then it'd be in the right of way.
Yeah, but, yeah, I mean, that's what he tried to say, if he's got an easement or more... Right, but I mean...
We'd have possession of that.
But they, but technically, they could just about build right up to the easement, right?
But they could build, I mean...
Right up to it?
They, they could start without getting a permit and, and put it right close. We've got some e, existing locations where property, you know, uh, a, a building or a grain bin or whatever was built too close to the right of way, and we deal with that.
But I mean, according to this law, they could build right up six inches off the right of way.
Right.
Well, in other cases, and Randy's run into a couple, where they wanna build a building, and there is setbacks, there is still property line setbacks, but if they don't have a permit and they build it too close to the neighbor's property line, we're talking more about just shit, not a...
Yeah.
Environment operation, and, well, that's too close, well, tough.
Yeah, well, tough.
But they, not, it's still not right for the regulations, but then, yeah, like you said, who's gonna deal with it? The state, can it really come out and police all this? No, and then they have, we're gonna, it just opened up a can of worms, you know, there's things, ways you can go about it, and I don't know if this takes everything out with, uh, you know, variances and so on and so forth, things that the Board of Adjustment can grant, but...
It, basically, it gets rid of the board, the board has no authority, so why even have a board?
Right.
Or an ordinance. Or an ordinance.
Kent Windus, uh...
It over, it over...
Mike Sexton's Saturday meeting, have they, haven't had one forever.
Hadn't heard anything, but from having one here, I saw the representatives up in Cassup County had one in person.
That's what I saw.
They're in, uh, I don't know if that was the end of December or January, I think.
But Tim and, and Mike used to come to Humboldt on Saturday mornings, and they'd pick questions for...
Definitely anything, I heard anything.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything for ever either, so...
It's not my intent to hit the Beehive.
So...
I do, I wanna make sure...
Send that question.
Yep. Get some exact clarification on this. I think that's what you're...
So, go ahead and call, I would, I would call Mike Sexton's office, try to find out either him or somebody that would be able to provide answers, should I have that so that all the boards would be there as well, or you want me to just do it?
What'd you come up with first? I mean, uh, someone that could come and talk to this board, zoning board, Board of Adjustment that knows the answers to these questions, would, I think, please clarify right here, that's what we're looking for, that's what you're looking for, that's what we're all looking for. And that's the idea that, are you reading too much into it? That's a really poor answer.
I agree.
We want clarification.
We went through the staff of going in, in April, I, for the Board of Adjustments and the Planning Board, we would meet and continue on what we had started, I'd asked them to review the lap, the old comprehensive plan and the, and the ordinance, and so we were gonna take the next step in April, but then this came up, and I'm like, you know, that's probably not a good idea.
Gotta take this step further.
So, I gotta, yeah, so like I said, I've been taking one step forward and two back, so...
Well, I think Tim would be a good place to start, he would, I think, would be able to give you some feedback, and if not, at least give us an idea as to what we're looking at.
Okay, I'll do that, thank you.
We appreciate your help. Thanks for your due diligence.
Clicking the bell. Okay, anything else to discuss that's important at the time? Now, look for a motion to adjourn.
Well moved.
Oh, oh, thank you, Sandy. We have a first and a second to adjourn at nine, oh...
Forty.
Nine forty.
Forty.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good work. We are done. Motion carries.